Welcome everyone to the regular meeting of Bangor School Committee. Today is Wednesday, December 11. Everyone please stand for the flag.
In the United States of America, in the republic of the nations, a nation under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
And do we have any adjustments to the agenda, Superintendent Norbison?
Yes, we do have an adjustment in superintendent update. And one item in EC. This is an additional item, but not a change to the agenda.
Okay, and could I get a motion to accept the adjustment?
So, second.
All in favor? Someone else? And public comments? Members of the public may address the school committee for up to three minutes on school and education matters. Public comment shall be directed to the school committee and be brief and non-repetitive. The school committee's practice is not to respond or debate to speakers during the public comment period. We are here to listen. The superintendent or her staff will follow up on comments outside of the meeting as appropriate. The committee will not permit profanity or shouting and request that the speakers be civil. Discussion of specific personnel or student matters and complaints concerning specific employees or students will not be allowed, but will be addressed through established policies and procedures. Before speaking, we encourage speakers to review school policy AC, which provides that the committee does not and will not discriminate nor tolerate discrimination against students or employees on the basis of membership in a protected class. Speakers who share these comments contrary to this policy will not be allowed to continue. Before starting, please state your name and place of residence. And do we have any public comment tonight? Okay. Moving on, can we have superintendent proposals and updates? First, do we have any action items this evening?
No, we do not.
Moving on to informational items. First item is superintendent update.
Okay, I'll provide you with my update for this evening. Starting with communication within the schools, we had very successful parent conferences of the week before Thanksgiving. I was interviewed by Lindell Smiley regarding snow days, so that was fun. And what we talked about as a staff is maintaining the traditional snow days and then monitoring that if it becomes excessive, rethinking potentially, but that's the consensus. And there's some additional information about administrators, central office staff, custodial maintenance technology, all of those staff do come to the buildings on snow days unless city hall is closed, and then we do not. Parents continue to appreciate the newsletters that are coming out from all of the schools. And the communique is at the printer. And if you were able to click the link, we do have the digital copy available. I think it looks great. Hopefully you'll find that it's a wealth of information and a great way to highlight many of the things, the wonderful things happening in the Bangor School Department. In terms of safety, Director Ray Finney has been conducting tabletop exercises to ensure that all of the schools are able to solidify their emergency preparedness. So he goes to the schools, they work through scenarios with the crisis response teams to ensure that they are well-versed and competent in the event of an emergency. In terms of curriculum, Dr. Harris Medberg is beginning work with department heads at the high school to take a look at our K-12 curricular alignment. So more information will be forthcoming in that area. In terms of community partnerships, we have several, but one I'd like to highlight is Dr. Butler's meeting with staff at Hussin University to strengthen that partnership as well as several staff members and Principal Mouring in terms of recruitment, but additional to that, looking at updating the Business Academy curriculum in partnership with Hussin. And there've been many, many events, but I'll just highlight a couple this week. Yesterday was a lovely high school winter concert. That was wonderful. I was able to participate and see all the kids, the orchestra, the band, and the chorus. And tomorrow night at the high school here, we'll have the middle school concert. In terms of the district, the budget timeline, we have the plan in place right now to conduct that process. We are looking at December, sending the later, later this month, or within this week, probably actually getting that budget template out and starting to populate the budget. So that'll be coming up. The survey for staff will close 15th, and Dr. Harris Medberg and I will be conducting an analysis of that data, and that will be reported out when that's complete. And I will be meeting with the Student Advisory Group again next week on December 19th at 7:30 in the morning and continue that conversation. In terms of the region and state, the UTC regional group is working on the crosswalk, and we're coming together to discuss the core content credit being awarded to UTC students. In the past, there were questions around the core content, and this is also in line with the recent legislation that requires us to ensure that students are getting the core content credit for that. So there'll be further information once that whole process has been solidified, but that's happening at this point. Any questions?
So up next, we've got Food Corps presentation.
Hello, my name is Ryan Parker. I'm here with Food Corps, which is a national nonprofit, and I'd just like to talk to you a little bit about what we do, who we are, and why I'm here today. So essentially, I've reached out to the superintendent when I found out that she was here because we've worked with her previously in a different district and we're really successful. And essentially, I just want to give you a very high-level overview of what Food Corps is and what we're hoping to help accomplish in the district. So as I mentioned, we're a nonprofit. We're part of the AmeriCorps Service Network, which means we essentially are allowed to place service members directly into communities throughout the country. We serve in seven, or an increasing, I think, 22 now states around the country. Maine was one of our original states where we had partnerships back in 2011. And our entire reason for being essentially is to connect kids to nourishing food and connect them to experiential learning that's based around that food. So that's anything from being outside, getting their hands dirty in a school garden, to conducting cooking classes and cooking lessons with kids. We do a lot of work in school cafeterias as well to help improve menu. So I've been meeting with the superintendent, with your school nutrition director, some of your principals as well, around different things that they want to see in the cafeteria that would help kids, more kids participate in your meal programs. And then the last thing that we always try to focus on is bringing community members into this programming. And the reason for that is Food Corps, as I mentioned, is a nonprofit, part of the AmeriCorps Service Network, which basically means we're not meant to be in any place forever. We come in when we're invited. We build up infrastructure. We help use, build up the culture of use of that infrastructure, so school gardens, greenhouses, whatever your district or schools would like in that vein, and then we leave. And we don't want to have all of that build up over a number of years and then drop off a cliff when we're no longer putting a service member in your district. And so what we're always looking to is our exit strategy before we ever put a service member through the front door. And I've spoken with the superintendent at length about this, and this is what we were able to do in Kattan, and we've been successful all around the state. I'll just give you, we have three different graduation pathways, we call them, which is essentially that exit strategy. Graduation pathway number one is your existing staff kind of embodies the culture. Every teacher is taking their kiddos out to the school garden. All of the meals in the school nutrition program are fresh and scratch-cooked and from local farms. Graduation pathway two, we essentially take the work that Food Corps has been doing with that added capacity of service members and shift it to a local nonprofit, someplace in the Bangor area, and they continue that work while we go somewhere else. And option number three is your district creates a position or positions in the budget to carry on the work. I am always very candid that the first two don't work here. So apologies if you were looking forward to that. I'm not saying it can't. I'm just saying it never has in the state of Maine. The only part of the reason for that, I think, is if we could get your existing staff to do all of that, they would already because everybody understands the value of experiential learning. But I think we're already asking too much of everybody in schools. So asking them to do one more thing, especially something as big as managing a garden, building raised beds, those sorts of things is usually a non-starter. And the second one is outside of Portland and Lewiston, we really don't have a lot of nonprofits in Maine that can provide that people-powered capacity that you'll get with Food Corps. And so my experience has always been that it's much, the only way to sustain this programming is to have a hub of the wheel, somebody who can do all of the coordination, not only in terms of infrastructure maintenance, but also in terms of connecting it to the curriculum. So that's one other thing I want to mention is that we are based around food, and I mentioned school garden lessons, cooking lessons, and things like that. But what we really try to do is get our service members to connect what they're doing to what your teachers are already teaching, so your existing learning standards. So as an example, in the fourth grade in the state of Maine, kids learn to calculate area and volume. We all know there are some kids who you can stand at a chalkboard, you can hand out worksheets until you're blue in the face, and their brains just don't work that way. But if you get them outside and you show them a square foot grid on a raised bed, they'll instantly understand what you've been trying to teach them for the last month. So that everybody's mind works differently, everybody learns differently, and we try to take advantage of that with these hands-on lessons. So that's really what we're trying to do. And I think the superintendent and I are in agreement that we would really like to see Bangor participate in this program. We've already kind of identified a couple of schools in the district. And I just, you know, wanted to let you all know what's happening and also really just be upfront that we are here for the long term. This is, our core members only serve for a maximum of two years, but often you'll have multiple years where different core members will rotate in and out. But we really are not going to be here forever, so I just want to be very upfront about that, that at some point in the future, the superintendent and I will probably be back here having the same conversation on the other end, saying, you guys have done all this amazing stuff, all the new infrastructure is built up, a lot of schools are really excited about using it, it's become a regular part of your curriculum. It's time for us to move on, and there will probably be a position proposal in the budget at some point several years from now. So any questions about anything related to this?
I'm sorry, number two.
Thank you. No question specifically other than to just applaud the initiative. I am glad that we're talking about this. I think that we are, as a society, especially our kids, chronically over-sugared, under-nourished, chronically sleep-deprived, and then kids are irritable or struggling in the classroom, and we wonder what's going on. So we are responsible for feeding these kids twice a day, certainly lunch, but also breakfast for many of them. So we have a responsibility ourselves to make sure that we're providing nourishing meals, and I think we do pretty well as a school district now. I'm not critiquing, but I think to partner here and to expand our understanding of this will not only be good for physical and mental health, but actually improve academic results, which I think is what we're here for more specifically. So it is all tied together, and I'm very happy to support moving, moving along with the initiative here.
Thank you. Number one, thank you. I also want to echo member spray. Thank you for this presentation, Ryan. I have a few questions. And do you want me to say them all at once? And then
I'm likely to forget near the end.
Okay, well, first of all, I'm talking about the infrastructure. Again, I appreciate this opportunity because I think that all of us are in agreement that this is something that our students would greatly benefit from, and any different pathway that students can take to learn is such a gift that we would be so honored to give to the students. But from a logistical standpoint, the infrastructure that Food Corps offers, you say max two years, is that something that Food Corps funds building that infrastructure? Is it they fund the person to come in, create that infrastructure, sort of build up the network? Then the funding piece has to be figured out by the district. Can you talk about that pathway a little bit?
Yep, that's a great question. So essentially, it costs Food Corps, well, it's different across the country, but in Maine, it costs us about $67,000 to put a Food Corps member in a district. And we raise the majority of that money, and so that goes to their living stipend, it goes to all their trainings, goes to my salary, just the overhead of running a national organization. But we ask the districts to pay what we call a partnership fee, which is $5,000 a year, and then there's a per-service member fee that helps, goes towards their, their living stipend, and that's $15,000 per member. So the discussion that we've been having with the superintendent is that would look, we're looking at two core members to be in this district, starting next year, and it's an 11-month term, and they have to get to 1,700 hours to be fully eligible for all of their AmeriCorps benefits. So that essentially is 1,700 hours over 11 months. They start in August and end in sometime in July. And so we place them in the district. We do a lot of training with them, both upfront at the beginning of the year, but then ongoing throughout, and then they will also partake in training that you all offer as a district, so your professional development hours and things like that. We ask that they be permitted to sit in on that because a lot of what they get out of this is professional development, and as an organization, we're trying to essentially create a generation of people that goes into education, that goes into school food with the ethos that we have as an organization, and kind of change the paradigm slowly. So that's our investment. And then in terms of the physical infrastructure, raised beds, soil for them, building greenhouses, that's something that the district covers. However, AmeriCorps rules allow our members to spend up to 10% of their service hours, so that's 170 hours fundraising. And the only limitation on that is that they can't fundraise from any federal agencies. So as an example, if the district wanted to go for a USDA farmer-school grant, the servicemember is not allowed to be involved in that until you've got it, and then they could be involved in carrying out the project itself. But other than that, our service members, especially in Maine, do a lot of fundraising. That's writing grants from main agricultural sector in the classroom to going to the local hardware store and asking for any kind lumber to build raised beds. We have great relationships with Johnny Seeds and Fedco, and they provide a lot. They love the programs that happen in schools, so they provide a lot of seeds and little trowels for little hands and things like that. So that infrastructure does come from the district, but again, we do a lot of fundraising through the core members in conjunction with their site supervisors on the ground, which will be, I think, the principals at the two schools, and so that's all done in coordination. And then the last thing I'll say about the, once Food Corps is ready to leave and you all are ready to create whatever the next state step is, my vision for that, in all the positions that we've helped create around the state, and there are a number, including in the Kattan region, the, what the board usually approves is the salary and benefits for that person. And then part of that person's job description is to go raise the money to run the programming. And that can actually be, I would love it if districts also put in $10,000, but I also was on a school board, and I know how hard that is. So it's actually pretty beneficial to have that be part of the job description because you can usually end up working that into your programming, and the kids learn business skills, marketing. A great example is Troy Howard Middle School in Belfast. They actually run a successful seed-saving business where they grow the plants, they harvest the seeds, they do a lot of counting, measuring to market the seeds. The kids design the artwork for all the seed packets, and then they're actually sold all over the country, and that money then goes back into the program. I think as an example, they just bought a new greenhouse with the money that they earned from that and selling produce at the co-op and things like that. So that's kind of how that works. And actually, I just want to show you a couple of things here. So these are the kinds of things that you'll see your kiddos doing in Food Corps schools. So this is actually in the Kattan Elementary School where the superintendent used to be located, as is this. This is a servicemember Gabrielle, who was actually trying a new recipe with these kiddos. So we're really big on, our motto is try new things. So we never force kids to try anything, but we take advantage of the positive side of peer pressure, and usually by the end of the term, they're, they're all happy to try stuff. And then this is down in Portland, so this is an example where in Portland, even though it's a massive district and no school garden is going to produce enough potatoes to feed 5,000 kids a day. What they do essentially, essentially is every year in every school garden, they plant potatoes in the spring. Then in the fall, they have a harvest day, and all of those potatoes get delivered to central kitchen. And then they are able to legitimately say, some of the potatoes on the menu today, you guys grew, and their participation goes up on that day, meaning increased revenue for their nutrition department. And then this is down in Belfast. This kiddo has a really hard time with a lot of different things, and she's helping build raised beds. So these are the types of things that we really go to. And again, raised, building a raised bed, there I'd probably bore you with all the curriculum connections you can get from that, building a compost bin, and then actually using them. So those are the types of things that we do. And again, those, that's how we kind of connect to the curriculum.
Thank you. Thanks for that. What's the retention rate between core Food Corps members and individuals that actually stay on with the district? Is there, does that typically happen?
Meaning, so
Meaning like
The retention rate really depends on how fast you go, you get to the point where we're ready to graduate. So as an example, I'll use Kattan as an example. We were there in partnership for four years. They had two core members each for two years, and four years is actually a relatively quick partnership for us, but it's also a very small district with only one elementary school. We were in Portland, so when we were ready to graduate, the second, the final core member stepped into the role that they, they created. In Portland, we've been there since Food Corps started, so since 2011, and it's take, it takes a long time with a district like that. So I imagine Bangor would be somewhere in the middle of that.
Okay, so I thought you said two years max.
It's two years per service member. So AmeriCorps rules basically say, if I'm going to be a service member, I can only serve in the same place for two years.
Got it. Got it. So the program doesn't end.
No, right, right. Sorry for that, yeah.
No, no, thank you so much for clarifying. We have two years to get all of this done. At two schools, that feels like a lot. And my last question, can you clarify, Food Corps is just pre-K through five, grade five?
We
Three?
We, for, for the partnership, the type of partnership we're going to do here, we're elementary school. And we don't, we kind of define that as building. So in some schools in Maine, elementary school is K through eight.
Okay.
And some schools, it's K through four. So here, we're going to be looking at a pre-K to three and a four to five, right? So we're going to be essentially running that whole gamut. And then the other thing about a district like this where there are multiple different neighborhoods and different buildings and things like that is we tend to want to enter into partnerships where we're able to serve everybody in a district. And so one of the challenging things is actually when we go, when we start looking at what's the next school? The school that we're leaving is usually like, well, what? We don't want you to leave. So that, in addition to coming back to you in five, six, seven years, however long it ends up taking, there may be some discussions about how are we going to fill that gap between when Food Corps leaves our school and when Food Corps leaves the district. And that can be challenging, but I've seen some pretty creative ways for schools to manage that up until we get to the point where we're ready to leave.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much.
Yeah, first, thank you very much for this, and total agreement with what Ben and Katie said, and very excited for this initiative. I, and this sort of piggybacks on what you were just talking about with the schools. You've mentioned a few times, I, I think, that it would be two schools would be the primary sites. Is there a goal to, to get more schools? What, what does that look like in terms of starting with two schools and then moving on to other schools if that's a part of what Food Corps does?
That generally is what we do, so we don't like to go into districts where there are multiple schools and only serve in, if there's five and we only serve in two, that just doesn't usually end well. So but that's also the way the majority of districts are set up in Maine. Obviously, with RSU system, which again, Bangor is not an RSU, but a similar situation. So we would really look to the long term to kind of finish quote-unquote at the two schools that we're talking about starting at, and then leapfrog to some other district. Our service members are allowed to serve at a maximum of two buildings at a time. But we've found that that's sort of a, an AmeriCorps Food Corps rule. I've found that being in one building is more than enough. And the first, the first few months of service is really about building relationships, getting the trust of the kiddos, learning all their names. You know, a lot of times you'll have a service member who's from the region, but sometimes you get one from California or Dakotas or, you know, all over the country we're from. So some of that is, it takes a little while for them to kind of get their feet under them and get to know folks. And then that second year, they really just take off, and the impact that you have is great. And so what we sometimes do is, instead of sort of a cold turkey clean break from one school and go to another, we will sometimes take the second part of the second year and start making inroads into that other school, the next school in line. Maybe it'll be two days in the new school and three days in the current school type of split. We kind of work that out based on how things are going in the first school, a lot of excitement in the, in the second school and things like that. What you will find, I think, is once we establish this at the first two schools, everybody's going to want this kind of programming. So we, again, we're here for the long term. And that's, you know, we've been pretty successful at doing it that way, slowly going around a district. But again, the big challenge is when you leave that first school, how do you keep that programming going? So we'll have to work through that as we get closer to the end of any individual school that we're serving in.
Do you know how Portland's navigated that question?
Well, Portland actually created nine full-time positions, which is the most that any, anybody's ever created in the country. And that, the problem with the way they did it, I'm not trying to say anything negative about Portland, but they use COVID relief money to fund those positions, so they're gone.
Yeah.
So we actually have had to kind of go back to square one there. Really discourage that, and I really discourage districts from using temporary grant funds even to pay for Food Corps.
Right.
Because I, again, I was on a school board. I know how school budgets are built. And what I'll say is that we kind of encourage the cost of Food Corps being a stepping stone to the cost of a full-time position.
Yeah.
So if you're, if you're able approve a $35,000 expenditure for two full-time Food Corps members, then you'll, you'll be able to have to raise that much less when it comes time to implement an in-house position.
Yeah, that makes sense. Thank you.
Thank you. Number three.
I want to hop in line and that I'm excited about this program as a former AmeriCorps member. I'm familiar with AmeriCorps, and I think it's a fabulous program in general, and I'm glad to see that it's still, I'm going strong. So I have a question. This might be too granular or in the weeds, but you'd reference several times that depends on the particular school district and the needs of the district, how long you would stay in that district in order to get to the function on their own. How long do you think it would take Bangor to do that without knowing? What are the steps that we need to complete in order to reach that? And if it was just dragging on, is there a, a moment when you're like, we can't sustain this any longer? I heard that, you know, you said Portland has been for the longest that you've been in Maine. Is there a point where you're like, guys, get it together, or is it just continue on until the needs are met and you feel comfortable leaving?
Yeah, I've only ever had one guys-get-it-together conversation in all the years I've been doing this because it's usually an ongoing conversation. So I actually sat down with the principal, the superintendent, the school nutrition director a couple of days ago, and we actually do have some tools that we use to lay out a roadmap of what is it we're trying to accomplish, what are the specific goals that the district has that we can help with. And then about once every year, in the, around, actually, we'll do around January, February, I actually go around and meet with everybody at all of our partnerships and check in on, okay, where are we on goal A, where are we on goal B? Do we need to roll this back because this one's taken priority, those types of things? And then we revisit them again in the summer every year. So it's an ongoing conversation. There's really no, we don't have a, we'll be here for five years, but we usually, I, part of my job is to push, and part of your job is to be realistic and recognize that Rome wasn't built in a day, and this stuff is really hard. And I just really want to, I thought I saw, yeah, Stefornia here, I really applaud his leadership at his school because he's very conscious of it's very easy with school gardens to go too big too quickly, and then you're going to end up with an eyesore in front of the school with, with something that could be a wonderful tool, could be beautification. And if you, if you don't have a methodical way to sustainably build things slowly, that's what will happen, and we really encourage that. So it may, you know, I could give you, we'll be in every school for two years, but it, it won't work that way. We might be, you know, I think we're going to start with Fruit Street and Fairmount. We might be at Fruit Street for two years and Fairmount for four years. It really depends on the school. I will say though, that if we get to the 11-year mark, we'll probably be having a different conversation.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Thank you very much.
Well, thank you so much, and thank you for your service. And I know you all don't do this for the thanks, but I was a school board member, and I know it's a thankless job, so thank you for everything you guys do for the kiddos here in the city.
Thank you. Thanks, Ryan. Up next, we have BD 279 update. Up next, we have um ED two seventy-nine update. Director Hayman will provide uh the school committee information about the uh ED two seventy-nine. Um, this, the EPS formula is what determines the um state and local funding. Uh, for the SAUs, uh, and that is the essential programs and services. That's the EPS formula.
All right, there's a, there's a one pager in your packet and um in a moment, it'll be up in the screen. What I did in essence, I was asked to. Take a look at the uh six-page ED seventy-nine and. Start interpreting what it's saying to us. So what I've done. On your one pager, I did a six-year analysis. I looked back starting with the uh two thousand eighteen, nineteen year. And brought it all the way through to the twenty-three, twenty-four year. And. We can see the bottom of it. Scroll the other way. That's it. That's all. There's nothing above that. Well, there was. Okay.
But yeah.
Is that?
Yeah, that's part of it.
Um, keep going up. Um. Interesting. Well, I'm not quite sure what happened to my self-document. It was beautiful. Um, but. We'll carry on. So the uh, the very top of the ED two seventy-nine takes a look at the um, uh, school attendance. And the first thing you should know about the ED two seventy-nine, it's, it's a look back. So the um. Most current year is the twenty-three, twenty-four year. And what that's actually looking at is the um October one attendance from. Two thousand twenty-two and two thousand twenty-one. So it's a, it's a look back, but it gives you a, a snapshot of what's happening over time. So um, in your packet. Um, what the attendance is looking at is the uh. Um, pre-K, K, then it looks at a column for first through fifth grade. Six through eight and then nine through twelve. And. If you look at the attendance of the Bangor School Department back in two thousand eighteen, nineteen. It was um three. One hundred and two students. And it was down to three thousand four hundred and fifty students. In the year twenty-three, twenty-four. Uh, which is a decline of two hundred and fifty-two students. So like a lot of the districts. And the area in the state of Maine, we are um slowly shrinking. So I wanted to um. Let you see that and it was not really isolated to one. One of the bands that was um. Throughout, so for instance, the first through fifth grades went down eighty-six children. While the high school went down seventy-seven children. So it was spread throughout, but overall was decreased to two hundred and fifty-two students. The uh second thing on the uh first page is um a bit of good news. It's. The capital rate per pupil. So while our attendance is um slowly decreasing. The amount the state of Maine is um attributing to each student is increasing. So in uh two thousand eighteen, nineteen. Elementary students were seven thousand eighty-nine dollars. And secondary was seven thousand five hundred and thirty-two dollars. And that's gone up. So now the elementary is eight thousand three hundred and sixteen. And the secondary is eighty-seven ninety-three. So that's gone up over twelve hundred dollars. In each of those, so. Um, that's helped offset the um. The D Kirsten students and I think every school, district in Maine has enjoyed that. Um, should directory on the um per pupil cost.
All right, and Jerry, is that um? Uh. Higher than inflation or is that kept with inflation like the amount that it's increased over that time?
I did not take a percentage, so I do not know that question. Um. I couldn't get back. I simply went to the raw data and they're all dollars. Sure.
Can you explain why we have had numbers with some students?
I'm not sure. Um, I'm not sure.
That, I can, I can explain that. That, that happens when students may be um homeschooled, but they partially enroll.
Thank you.
In, in various courses and then they could be a point five or a point two five. Thank you. Yes.
I have a quick question.
Yes, I'm sorry, number three.
The eighty-three, one, six and the eighty-seven, nine. The elementary, secondary per pupil, is that, is that universal or is that specific to Bangor?
Specific to Bangor. They look at each school district, they look at. Um, the makeup of every facet of the school and that's what they're assigning to us.
Is, did they take a close look at special education population and growth and special ed population? Is that a part of the algorithm?
Special education is on the um, the second page and I have not got there yet.
Yeah.
I look forward to it. Stopping with the numbers because, well, that's what I do.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you. Did we answer him? Thank you, Jerry.
Okay.
Thank you.
The, the third, the third um section um of the spreadsheet in your packet talks about the number of teachers. And the um state of Maine is once again looking at the makeup of. Each school district, including Bangor School District, and they're determining. Exactly, precisely how many teachers they think should um be um teaching in a district. And they actually break it down by those categories. Pre-K to K, one to five, et cetera. And they also have a line for the actual FTEs in the district. And um. Current, over the course of time. As you would suspect with fewer children. Um, those numbers have shrank as well. The um. What the state is saying. Um, you should have is gone from two hundred and twenty-five teachers. Down to two hundred and ten. Which is a decrease of fifteen students, uh fifteen teachers, I mean. And uh, once again, that is not. Uh, weighted and um towards one of the weight uh age bands. That's pretty much uniform across from pre-K right through to high school is pretty even. And the actual FTEs. While that is a decrease as well, we've gone from two hundred and forty teachers down to two hundred and. Uh, thirty-two teachers, which is a decrease of about eight teachers. Over that same time. And they give a percentage. Um. And anytime. Percentage is below one. Um, the one ideally is you're right on the mark, you're doing exactly what the state thinks you should be doing. But if you're below that, you're um, um heavily, more heavily weighted in that area than they think you should be. If you're over one percent, then um. Um, you're, you're applying more teachers to an area where they think you should be. So. Right now, we're below, we've gone from point nine four down to a point nine. So that's a decrease over six years. The third section takes a look at beyond teachers, looks at the other um categories that is. Seven other categories that they list from guidance, library, health, ed techs. Uh, library, text, therapy and student admin. We have um slowly. Um, decreased those as well over six years. Um, but once again, a lot of the numbers are below that mythical one point zero. Um, however, in those areas. The um, well, teachers are over two hundred. Um, the um accounts in those areas are quite small, as you can imagine. So um. Guidance, for instance. The um recommended for the, about the state is eleven. And we're currently at fifteen point eight. Um, the one we're under is the one where you always have trouble hiring, which was our ed techs. Again. The uh ed techs, they should say we should be at twenty. And we're at twelve and a half. So we, this shows you, we, we, we try to hire them, but we've had. Um, little luck over the last few years. And finally, um, also good news. The um. The amount that is um, the state calculates by those categories, including teachers, it's also gone over time. So the um, this, the teachers is the biggest category, so I'll look at that one. It's gone from um. Uh, eleven million, seven hundred thousand in the year eighteen, nineteen. All the way to thirteen million, three hundred thousand in the year twenty-three, twenty-four. So overall, I've given you um the increase by category, but they're all positive. They've all gone up. Um, if the ratios were a little bit more or the student count was a little bit more. The dollars would be a little bit more, but. Overall, it's. Trending in the right direction. So that's kind of a very brief, high-level overview of what the ED two seventy-nine page one is telling us. Any questions?
I was interested in that special education piece. Are they taking into account? Percentage of increase in special education population? In the, in the determinations.
Oh, oh, no. I'll get to that next. Like I said, it's on uh the, the very next page. It um. Um, it's quite detailed about special education.
They don't have that here.
I don't have that page.
No, I, I haven't done that analysis. ED two seventy-nine is about six pages of data, nothing but data. And it takes a while to um. Look at it all and could do the six-year comparison, but I'll, I'll focus on that next.
Great. Thank you.
Yep. All right, thank you.
Thank you so much, Jerry. Up next, we have uh special education update. Director Babin. Special Education Director Christie Babin will give us an update um. On the state of special education in the department.
Good evening. Unlike Jerry, I have numbers that have gone up, not down, um, in student population. I'm gonna quickly just highlight some of the things that are in the PowerPoint that you do have in your packet. I just gave you the timeline of special education law. I'm not gonna read through that. It's just background information for you. The current law that we're um operating under are these two laws, the Individuals with Disabilities Education Act that was reauthorized in two thousand and four. And those are the current special education laws that we operate in special education in the state of Maine under user or chapter one oh one. That um hook is on my desk and I refer to it constantly throughout the day and school year. Every school district. Bangor School Department has a child find responsibility. We're currently responsible for students um kindergarten up until the age of twenty-two if they have a disability. We're also responsible for students who are um placed in private schools and if the private schools are located in the city of Bangor. So we have that responsibility. And that's um holding um a meeting to talk about concerns that parents may have, teachers may have. Case managers may have, or actually the physicians also. And due to the lack of resources in our area, we have seen an increase to physicians referring parents to the school department to have those evaluations done. What is special education? It means especially designed instruction at no cost to parents to meet the unique needs of a child with a disability. Means that we have to offer the services at no cost to the family. It means that they can't progress or access the general education setting. There are three prongs to eligibility for special education and these are things that the IEP team have to come to the table to discuss. Students have to have one of the fourteen disabilities that are listed there. Um, the disability has to be adversely affecting the student's educational performance. The state of Maine actually has an adverse effect form that we have to go down through. At an IEP meeting to determine eligibility for special education. And they must need special education when because of their disability, they are unable to access the general education curriculum. So tonight I wanted to update you on the, on the October one to twenty twenty-four um student. Count for special education. As of October one of twenty twenty-four, we have eight hundred and thirty-four special education students that are identified under IBA. That is twenty-four percent of our current student population. That number has increased. See, and you'll see in your other document that you have from twenty sixteen to twenty twenty-four. Um, a significant increase after COVID with special education referrals. You'll also see that um the two um biggest areas that we've seen an increase are disabilities under autism, the autism category. And also other health impairment, which would include our students who have ADHD. Um, for comparison, I only have the twenty twenty-three, twenty-four. We don't have the twenty-four, twenty, um, twenty-four data from the state of Maine. But for the state identification, the state is at nineteen point nine. So the Bangor School Department is higher than the state average. Not unusual because we are a service center. Give you a little bit of background knowledge on the IEP, which is the Individual Education Plan. When students are referred to special education, we have to go through that child find process, do evaluations, come to the table, determine eligibility under special education. We have the responsibility to come to the table on an annual basis to discuss students' needs, parents' concerns, students' strengths. And come up with a plan to meet those needs for their education. We also have the responsibility to come to the table anytime that there's a concern, whether it be a teacher concern, a parent concern, or a case manager concern. Those are some of the considerations that we have to talk about at that IEP meeting. It's a comprehensive meeting that takes about an hour to an hour and a half, depending on the student needs. One of the highlights here is assistive technology. We in the Bangor School Department, because our students um with a disability category of autism has increased significantly. Um, we also are seeing an increase in our assistive technology. We've gone from um twelve students utilizing a communication device to fifty-three students currently using a communication device. We have the responsibility to program for students in the least restrictive environment. Um, I'm proud to say that seventy-three percent of our students are accessing. Their special education either in the general education setting or in a resource room setting. Every school in the Bangor School Department has a resource room for students to access specially designed instruction. We do have twenty-two percent of our student population whose needs are a little bit higher and the IEP team has determined that they need a more restrictive setting. And they're receiving the majority of their instruction in a self-contained special education setting. There are um classes in every building. Uh, we do um have to meet the needs across the, the district. And some buildings have more self-contained classrooms than others. And then three percent of our students are educated in a separate school. As to the Bangor Regional Therapeutic Day Treatment Program, which is a public day treatment program that's regionalized under Spruce. And then we also have access to special purpose programs in the area. So Stillwater Academy is one of those and Kids Peace in Old Town is another. We do have a small student population also. It was point oh five in your packet. Um, that are educated either in a homebound setting or a hospital setting. And that, that changes because we have the responsibility to get them back into school.
So as before you move on, um, a question about the previous slide. Um, what, what are those numbers comparing to um the rest of Maine? You said like, uh, the rest of Maine has ninety percent and we have thirty-two percent. I would be interested to know what.
I don't have that information, but I can get it.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thanks. On the, the twenty-two percent and the three percent. Two thousand twenty to now. Increase in those percentages, stable, decrease?
The one that has increased is our um students receiving instruction in a self-contained classroom because our, our students with a more. I want to say more severe, but the needs are higher, has increased over time.
So both of those cat, both of those categories, the, the self-contained and the separate school have increased.
But not significantly.
Twenty twenty, not significant.
Not significantly. I can go back and look. I did look at that, but I don't have the data in front of me, so I don't want to misspeak. Um, I think last year it was two percent of our students were being programmed for outside, but I, I can look at that.
I'd be interested and I think others would be, particularly when getting into budget season on that piece of data.
Yeah, and I think um city council too. We had a meeting with them today and these are some of the specific questions that they asked about. So it'd be nice to have that information.
And, and it is important to note, three percent is a small student population, right? But those programs are, it is significant cost. The Bangor Regional Therapeutic Day Treatment Program, because it's a public day treatment program, um, is a cost saving for us. Um, and that's the first, we always try public day treatment before we go private. Um, but that program is about forty-eight thousand a year compared to approximately a hundred to a hundred and fifty thousand for kids' pieces or still water. Any other questions?
I have questions, but um, I don't, I was gonna wait until the end. Do, do you prefer that we?
Doesn't matter, whatever works.
Well, uh, so if we go back um to the slide with the fourteen speci- specific disabilities. Um, so those are general categories. Um so those are general categories. I see that, but gee, so um for example, emotional disability or orthopedic impairment, that could be a variety of things, right? That many branches of those.
Yeah.
So who um would would it be like a provider who would um dictate which ones? Like, um I can't think of um, you know, whether it's um, I can't think of anything off the top, like off the top of my head, but um, would a provider say, okay, this would be one of those fourteen specific disabilities?
It's actually the IEP team's
Okay.
decision to determine what disability is impacting the most
Okay.
in the child's ability to access their education. Um some of those, the specific learning disability, there's a specific form that you have to complete that the state of Maine requires, and you have to, if if enough answers are yes, then the team has to determine if there's a specific learning disability present. Um the other one is there's a platform. The state is working on an emotional disability form to talk about that. She determine, you know, do we need to have a form to determine if a child truly has an emotional disability to qualify? The other piece is in user, the state law chapter one oh one, has descriptions of what falls under each disability category that we have to follow.
Okay, so that makes sense. So like a uh, you know, a speech impediment, um like a list, for example, would not ne- necessarily be categorized as one of these because it doesn't adversely affect their educational performance, right? So.
Yeah, that makes sense. And speech also has an adverse effect form that they have to go down through, and the classroom teacher has to follow the form also to determine if it's impacting them in the classrooms.
That makes sense, yeah. Then just one more question. With the IEP and the ELL, like this was a question that came up today as well. Um you know, the multilingual um piece, um you know, are they? I think that was a question asked, like are they part of special education? And I know that that's IEP is different than. I mean, it's it's complicated, but can you explain that, please?
So um students who have um multilingual needs have an ILP plan that is developed to meet the language needs. Um and then there's specific criteria to to look for um for special education also. They do have, students who are multilingual also have access to special education. Um we have the responsibility to make sure that when we do an evaluation, that we have an evaluator who can speak the the native language of the child. Um and that that is the most challenging piece right now.
Yeah. Thank you.
If I can get back to that. Um the kindergarten transition, we um are one of two states in the state and the United States that offers intervention outside of the public school. The public schools are going to be taking over the three and four-year-old special education needs. Um I think it's the fall of twenty twenty-six that we're going to become responsible for that. I'm personally looking forward to that. I'm excited for that to happen. Um we just got our information from Child Development Services. So this slide looks a little different tonight than what you have in your packet because I just got the information from CDS. But we're anticipating to welcome fifty-five students who are currently unidentified under IDEA into kindergarten next year. I gave you some statistics from the last few years. Like last year, we anticipated sixty-five students, fifty-two of those students enrolled. Um students that are um identified and receiving services through Child Development Services can stay under a medical model with some of the programs that they attend. So some families make that decision. They do lose their privilege to fake during that time because it's a medical model. Um and some students also, if their birth date is within the cutoff, they're, they call them six seventy-six children, but they can remain in the pre-K preschool system for one more school year. So that's where you're seeing those discrepancies where fifty-two students came in. The important piece to note here is this does not include the students during kindergarten screening that are identified as students who need a special education referral. Right? These are students who are coming to us already identified when they're entering kindergarten.
So can I just um clarify for that fall of twenty twenty-six? Right now, a lot of families are utilizing places like CDS to identify if their child needs special services before entering kindergarten. Once the schools take over, will this school district have a responsibility for children of what, three years old?
It will be responsible for child find for three-year-olds and services.
Okay.
So three and four-year-olds.
Three and four-year-olds. Okay, because right now, if I'm understanding it correctly, child find starts in kindergarten. Okay, so it'll be required in pre-K and then even before pre-K in twenty twenty-six. So that will also.
That's.
Yep. Thank you. And keep in mind where, yeah, but that's what I can.
And then the last slide I just put in our section five oh four, that's under the Americans with Disabilities Act. Um the Office of Pupil Services also oversees the five oh fours to the district. These are students who have um a diagnosis where um it's impacting their ability to access their education, but they don't require specially designed instruction under special education to progress in the curriculum. So we write a plan so that we can put accommodations and modifications in place to support the child in accessing their education. Um for the twenty-four, the start, I did an October one count for the start of the school year, and we currently have three hundred and twenty-two students accessing a five oh four. Any other questions?
Can I just, I just want to say thank you. I know that there's a lot of data and numbers, and it's very important work. Um and it's, it's not just about us here at this table and the families that receive the services, but you know, the city is also very interested in how we can best support um this group. So I really appreciate finding these numbers together, and so eloquently explaining some really big laws. So thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Um up next, we have resignations.
I'm reporting the following resignations. Uh Steve, Stephen Johnston, Assistant Boys Swim at Bangor High School. Okay, so moving on to business action items. Um first action item we have is the acceptance of the minutes of the regular meeting at November twenty, twenty twenty-four. Can I get a motion to accept the minutes? So.
Thank you.
Thank you. All in favor? Seven out. And next up, we have the financial report. So the June budget transfer, twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four. Can I get a motion to accept? Come on. All in favor? I don't know. And now for personnel updates for extra duty assignments. I am recommending approval of the following extra duty assignments for twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five. Tiffany Levesque, JV Coach cheering at Bangor High School. David Blatch, Assistant Boys uh Swim Coach, Bangor High School. And Sarah Holsapple, Dramatics at William S. Cohen School.
So move second. All in favor?
Seven out.
And next up, we have um committee member sprayed. They'll share the following donations.
Thank you, Madam Chair, to William S. Cohen School from Bethany Art Trees, a cash donation to support students having a total dollar value of two hundred and fifty dollars. To William S. Cohen School from Marlene and Frank Soucy, a cash donation to support students during holiday season, having a total dollar value of two hundred and fifty dollars. To Fairmount School from Saint Paul, the Apostle Parish, socks and sneakers to support students' needs, having a total dollar value of two hundred and seventy dollars. To Fairmount School from Hannaford Help Schools, a cash donation to support students, having a total dollar value of three hundred and sixty-eight dollars and four cents. To Mary Snow School from Hannaford Help Schools, a cash donation having a total dollar value of three hundred and seventy-four dollars and four cents. To Fruit Street School from Charleston Church, quotes for students having a total dollar value of five hundred dollars. Divine Street School from Charleston Church, winner quotes for students having a total dollar value of five hundred and fifty dollars. Divine Street School from Hannaford Community Bags, a cash donation to support students, having a total dollar value of three hundred and seventy-nine dollars. Divine Street School from Hannaford Help Schools Programs, a cash donation to support students, having a total dollar value of three hundred and sixty-five dollars. Divine Street School from Anonymous, cash donation having a total dollar value of two hundred and fifty dollars. Abraham Lincoln School from Charleston Church, winter coats for students having a total dollar value of one thousand one hundred and fifty dollars. And to Abraham Lincoln School from Hannaford Help Schools, a cash donation to support students, having a total dollar value of four hundred and one dollars and four cents. It's a lot of generosity. With thanks, I'll move motion to accept.
Second.
All in favor?
Seven out.
Thank you. And now for introductory uh introduction items. You have the first reading of revised policies.
I'm recommending the um first uh reading of the revised policy. Revised policy GCA thirty-one, Technology Director. Can I get a motion?
Someone.
Second. All in favor? Seven out. And moving on to committee updates. Do we have any comments or questions from the committee? Uh members, Andrea?
Hi, um I just want to take a minute to say thank you to everybody for the flexibility that we've had during this wacky weather uh period. As Dr. Robinson has done a great job of making these delay calls um and ensuring the safety of all the students and the staff getting everywhere, staff and you know, our administrators. I know it's not easy for that two-hour shift in the morning. Um but I think that it's a wise decision, and word on the street is that people are pretty happy with having the delays rather than the full snow day. Um I also just wanted to say again, because it's our last uh meeting before the holiday season, happy holidays to everybody in the room um and anybody watching online who's supposed as well. It's been a great year, and I'm looking forward to everything that's coming up.
Um committee appointments. We have appointments. Uh representative reports. We have uh drop up with the candidates. We have UTC. Sorry, I'm sorry. Do we have drop? No. Um do you guys wanna?
We got to take a night.
All right.
So we had a meeting, uh UTC had a meeting on December fifth at six PM. Some updates. On December second, a life flight of Maine visited UTC to conduct a ground safety course for EMS and law students. The highlight was a helicopter landing in the parking lot, followed by hands-on training. On November twenty-first, pre-engineering students toured Somac America, Inc., gaining valuable industry insights. Technicians provided students with an extensive showcase of the in-house machining and assembly processes within the Brewer Maine manufacturing plant. Uh in business leadership, five students from the Business Leadership Program launched a clothing company called Maine Minimal. Their first limited-time product drop opened for just forty-eight hours exceeded sales expectations. Uh as a made-to-order business, customers are now picking up their products. And you can follow them on Facebook and Instagram at Maine Minimal Company, or visit their website, wwwmaineminimal.com. One other update, uh students in grades three through five from VZ Community School recently had an exciting opportunity to explore various programs at UTC. So UTC is inviting schools uh in and even uh younger and younger ages. They interacted with UTC students who shared insights about their learning experiences. Additionally, the younger students enjoyed trying out tools and supplies, sparking their curiosity and interest in future CTE pathways. Remember, Brian and I were just talking before the meeting and wondering if maybe Bangor might want to do this at some point as well.
I think that uh this definitely worth having a conversation. I think the engaging nature of the hands-on experiences um is wonderful. We need to make sure that it's available to all students.
It's a good track.
Desire.
Yeah.
I wasn't, I actually wasn't aware of that. That's new news to me.
Yeah.
They brought schools, and we did bring our middle schools in to tour, uh but I wasn't aware that they were bringing in elementary.
I think they're just starting to do that, yeah, dipping their toe into doing that. That's their point. Thank you.
Thank you. Um I did get in on that first drop, and the sweatshirts are great. They're very cool. I um do not look cool in it, but they're it's not the sweatshirt's fault.
Yes.
They are. Yeah. Follow them. Yes. They created the whole business line, their website, their marketing. It's very impressive.
It it got me. I mean, I totally bought a sweatshirt. Really, it was very impressive how quickly they got there. So great job, you say. Um do we have any other committee updates right now? Otherwise, we want the student committee updates.
Okay, so we just have a couple of things tonight. I wanted to start off by giving a little reminder to my fellow seniors to meet with your guidance counselors for help with future plans and having access to a wide variety of scholarships, which is really cool. And then another fun little opportunity for parents in the area, a kids' night out this Friday at the Fruit Street School. It's an opportunity for all parents pre-K through third grade who want to take the night off, have a little fun. Um activities at this event include games in the gym and arts and crafts. It's just fifteen dollars per student. It'll take place from five to seven, and all proceeds go to the BHS class of twenty twenty-seven. And then one more little thing, uh the Bangor Schools are hosting a food drive from December second to the twentieth. Um help the community by donating non-perishable food items. Uh there are drop-off locations at all the Bangor Schools. I'm gonna pass it to Brittany.
A couple of more things we have today. Um Bangor, hey, Bangor High Basketball won with a big victory over Portland in their opening game. We have Phil Laalfond on the twenty-seven for varsity hockey. And per multiple requests from friends and my sister, there is hope of a day off tomorrow.
My son is.
And both of us would like to wish happy holidays to everyone as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
You cannot pressure us.
Make a decision.
Now, do we have any other reports? Yeah, all right. So the next up, we have our information dates. Uh so the next important dates we have coming up, Friday, December twentieth, is Bangor Day. Wednesday, January eighth, twenty twenty-five, regular meeting, seven PM, Bangor High School Library. Uh Wednesday, January twenty-second, twenty twenty-five, regular meeting, seven PM, Bangor High School Library. Wednesday, February twelfth, twenty twenty-five, regular meeting, seven PM, Bangor High School Library, and Wednesday, February twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-five, regular meeting Bangor High School Library. Any other questions or comments from the committee?
I just, I wanted to wish everyone happy holidays as well. There are many diverse holidays that are coming up between now and when we meet again in January eighth. Um regardless of what holiday it is that you're celebrating. See you in the new year.
Thank you. Um in that case, we want a journey.
Love that gap. Seven out.
Thank you.